Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the regular city council meeting of Monday after October 25th, 2021 to order at 7:00 PM. While we all rise, shall pledge allegiance. Alex, please.
Of this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm not sure who's calling the vote this evening. Justin.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
President.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle?
Present.
And he.
Present.
And then student representative Gilbert?
Present.
And Aaron, appears is currently.
Okay, item C is approval of meeting minutes from our October 11th, 2021 meeting. I'm moved by cousins.
My second.
Certainly my stop. Any discussion on against Paul, I think he was off. The members of council.
Just a small thing on the bottom of page three, under consented end I K two, consideration of appointment to Parks and Recreation Commission, I thought it might be nice to mention who that was. Melissa.
Okay. Sure.
And then supervisor page six, under number four, under the motion, description of the motion, it says, close twenty yet until the next October 25th, 2021 meeting. I think he just said that the word next.
Sure. Sure. Other comments or comments on the minutes? I see none. And Justin, if you call up the room, please.
Council members, cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Under free range participation, I'd like to read a meriting proclamation. While I just saw this in the backup, and I hope we got all of the facts as quick as possible. So if you made an error, my apologies. Everyone to put this together, see if I can do this. See, Dexter proclamation, October 11th, 2021. Whereas Pat Cousins was born in London, Kentucky in 1937, moved to the Dexter area with her husband in the 1960s, and was a longtime resident of the village and of the city of Dexter. And whereas Pat Cousins and her husband Paul owned and operated Cousin's Heritage Inn, a well-known farm-to-table restaurant located in the village of Dexter for eighteen years. And whereas Pat Cousins served as an elected treasurer for the village of Dexter, as an election inspector for both the village and the city of Dexter, and as fill-in staff for the village office. And whereas Pat Cousins was a member of the Dexter District Library Board for twenty years, serving for ten years as treasurer, where she was a vital member of the finance and facilities committees, and played an instrumental role in bringing the vision of the new library building on our plan to speak to life. And whereas Pat Cousins has further demonstrated her commitment to the community, through participation in community organizations such as Dexter Garden Club, Women's Business Association, Dexter Historical Society, the Encore Musical Theater Company, and the Dexter Senior Senate. And whereas Pat Cousins passed away on September 24th, 2021, and her loss is deeply felt by many in the city of Dexter and the greater Dexter community who have known and respected her. And now therefore, the city of Dexter extends its thanks and appreciation to Pat Cousins for her years of service to the citizens of Dexter and extends its sincere condolences to her family and friends. Item B, right, is approval of the agenda.
Council members, Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Aron?
Yeah.
Cousins?
Yes.
And he.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Under item F, are any councilor's declarations to be today's? Seeing none at this time, anything to bring up? Item G is public hearings. We have two of them this evening. The first public hearing is on our efforts and back with interest ordinance. I will open the public hearing at 7:07. And I will ask if there's anyone that would like to speak on the proposed ordinance. And Mike, just to the record, recognizing that on whom, we have Michelle and Marie. Doesn't look like any other audience.
Yes, sir.
Anybody in the audience here who wants to speak on this? And those factors here for reference. I will close the public hearing at 7:08, just to have a different number. That's okay. And as we're talking, they have the option to take the motions they want to without awareness, the changes that we asked our staff to make were presented in red there. With red and blue.
I'm going to approve the ordinance as amended beginning on page twelve of the packet. I think there's maybe one other amendment that I can mention during discussions, but that is the first one.
Support.
For Michelle, thank you.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy with it. We've talked a lot about it. I think the only suggestion I have shows up in the supplemental. Staff update. I think, Scott, for your editor, I think I'm fine with your edits. The additions, I think the only thing that's worth changing is the medical is the second point in the supplemental packet, so on page thirteen. It's just adding an or before service on public boards, just so that part of the sentence reads. And to encourage members of the public to seek public office, employment, or service on public boards, comma, and to I think we didn't even add or because it was also the part of the same clause. And then I guess we can end the supplemental packet. I just thought it would be worth mentioning. I don't know if it's worth making a change in the actual ordinance itself. But just thinking about how because it seems like the way this is reading now, then it's sort of up to the vote of the public body to make a determination about the conflict. And I think as a courtesy to the members of the public body, as soon as somebody is aware of a conflict of interest that they think they might be disclosing at a meeting, I don't know what the best way is to let other people on the public body be aware of it so that they have more time to contemplate it than just a couple of seconds after that part of the agenda. So again, I'm not sure that that needs to be written into the ordinance necessarily, but just it's something that can be.
Like be something we could work into updated rules of procedure in the future. Test it out and then if necessary, do an amendment.
Enough.
Okay. Thank you. That can be the policy.
Nope, just again, sorry, everybody. I think this started because I was reading the charter a couple of years ago and said, we're supposed to have this. Can we, can I get a copy of it? So my apologies for that.
No problem. I wanted to just ask one question on page fifteen. And Scott, maybe I'm reading over something to jump in here. Is under this under six I, is all of six I included in K? Is it redundant to me? I realize that we added something in K. But both of those sentences that are in, or that one long sentence, this I, is actually right in the middle of K. Like almost word to word, except for that you added in when you're doing the. If it's redundant, it can be eliminated.
Did you need to copy staff?
No. Yeah, I think K is really related to, you know, it's really more related to the disclosure that.
Yeah, that's the first part of that.
Right.
Then we say and, and then it's exactly I.
Yeah, I, I think that the idea was that, you know, they would disclose in any, in any event that they had a conflict as described in I. So I mean, we can certainly.
Okay, it's not a good deal. This is it. It's not an asset question. Right.
And you know, I guess it's up, and we can either, you know, I don't know how you want to do it procedurally, but you know, we could.
I'm really not trying to slow anything down. I just thought, but I was reading it.
There is a difference. So in I, it's specifically called out being in which the public service is directly involved, the public service is employed. And you pay this to the benefit of the beneficial interest. So there.
Okay, I guess I read. Okay, then. Okay, fair enough. Hit back the comments. Thank you. The other comments on upstairs? Okay, Justin, why don't you call the vote to approve the ordinance? What are the words, what are the words for?
Council members, Michelle?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Aron?
Yeah.
And he.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Our second public hearing this evening starts on page one of the packet and is on adopting the ordinance for the general code. This is for our update. So I'll open that public hearing at 7:14. And Justin, just for the purpose of pulling there, when's the last time we did this?
So the last time we did this was in September of 2017.
Right?
Yep.
Four years ago?
Yeah. The goal's good every three years.
Okay.
Actually, it was a bit of a rocky year.
Yeah, okay.
In. Yeah.
Okay, anybody in the audience or on the Zoom, want to take a comment under the voting here? Nobody? I'm going to close the public hearing then at 7:15. What I've got to consider, adopt the ordinance.
We'll make a move. Yeah. I second.
Everybody out? All right, Dallas?
Yeah, I'm good.
Zach? Just a minor tweak and then a question since we have our council here, a fine detailed question. Should it also read, "The city of Dexter hereby ordains," just for consistency with our charter?
Yeah, so that was brought up in these questions as well. And yeah, we can, we can change it to hereby.
Yes. My next question is on section two. "All ordinances of a general permanent nature acted honor before today and not included in the code are recognized and continue to be enforced by reference or repeal." We just adopted something on today. Is that recognized and incorporated? Or if we adopt this, do we repeal what we just adopted?
I love those questions.
Should it be just before, before October 25th?
We should probably figure that out because I think that the ethics ordinance will not be going to affect until it's published, which won't be for another, you know, ten days or so. And we don't want to repeal that.
So I. I would probably change it to November 3rd, which is when both of these likely to be published.
That seems like a simple fix. I've been hearing now. I said, that seems like a simple fix.
Right. And I know that because there's a local community that adopted and repealed their zoning ordinance at the same time. They were about three years without having a zoning ordinance, just no one looked at the very front of the thing there. Do this is kind of a technical question for staff. Will the ordinance and ethics that we just have be codified with this?
And that is my plan.
Okay. I'm all good then. Thank you. How much is the binder if I wanted to get one to be real nerdy at home? Do I see seventy?
I have to look. Okay. I want to see it's a couple hundred bucks. For another one.
Well, give them a shout when you get a chance because I am that.
Okay. If you can print one off, then it's ten cents a page or eight cents a page that way.
Or I could.
Okay, other questions, folks? Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the ordinance on page twenty, turn to page twenty-two with the two changes, the additional word hereby, the city of Dexter hereby our names, and the date in section two honor before I can enter, November 3rd.
Council members, Fisher?
Yes.
Aron?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yeah.
And he.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B on the agenda is nonarranged suspension. So very wonderful to speak soon. Thanks, your attendants. You're welcome to know who to. Appreciate it. You see any questions online? No questions. Mike, none from the others? Okay, well, none this time. There was one communication in the back. Any comments on the meeting calendar? Okay, excellent. First report this evening is from our finance director, Dr. Ressentia. Marie Sherry with the $11 million cash report.
I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't hear that.
I just said with the $11 million cash report.
Oh, yes, yes. Well, we're a little flush right now with taxes. Um, so you have my report in front of you. You have the written update. Are there any questions?
Is the summer tax collection rate similar to past years?
It's a little bit lower actually, and I'm not quite sure why. Um, the dollar amount is not, but the percentage wise is. It's probably just a combination of who was delinquent.
Okay.
It's not like drastically lower.
What are we gonna have in session about the fiscal recovery fund? The federal writers local town? Or what's your plan for the 240?
For the, for the, to the art book?
I'm just reading on page thirty-six there.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
So that's, that's the half of the full magnitude.
I'm trying to per second to.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's.
And at the point where we are actually using the money, that's when we'll have to make a budget amendment to transfer it from general fund into water.
Okay.
My understanding, after thirty, is that that's the second half will likely be larger than that because there are communities that chose not to participate, and that money is going back in the pool to get divvied amongst communities that are.
That is a possibility. I don't think there's that many that have actually opted out.
Who wouldn't want one?
And I heard that there were some communities that were initially thinking that they were going to opt out, but then when it came down to, you know, they could be used to offset losses related to the code that they, they found things to use it for.
And one other thing with the, with all of the federal funding that is coming down the pike, there will probably be future opportunities for grants or cost sharing or infrastructure improvements or a wide host of things as the state decides what it wants to do with the funding that it's received. And that's not, that's even outside of any infrastructure bill that Congress might pass here in the future.
But.
Yeah, is there anything particularly noteworthy, noteworthy that you want to make sure that we don't miss about this or this, you know, par for the course, what you expected, or anything that we should be paying attention to?
On the federal funding?
Uh, no, just your, your, your update, I guess. Did I do or?
No, there, there's nothing out of the ordinary. Um, we, our, our state revenue sharing is a little bit higher than budgeted, as is the local community stabilization. Um, but that's not unheard of, just because we tend to be slightly conservative on that. Um, but everything else is going pretty much as, as it usually does. Interest rates are horrible. I'm, I'm working with meter investments right now to try to figure a way to maximize interest because it's just really bad right now.
I have a map. You work for the sewer fund? Great.
Sorry?
Have we made anything worse in the sewer fund?
Have we made anything worse in it?
Yeah, are you going normal? I mean, that was our, remember, that was our fund that had the most concern about this.
Right, yeah. Um, well, I do understand that there might be some budget pressures just due to the increase in costs for chemicals and other supplies. So that's something that we're definitely going to have to keep an eye on as we move through the fiscal year. But that I think would be the biggest things in that. I mean, that's going to affect both the store and water, fuel costs, you know, chemicals, that sort of thing.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Marie.
Okay, and I apologize for not being there in person. I had a little bit of a problem here at home, so.
No problem. Well, except for the problem.
Yeah. Got three inches of water in my basement.
Oh, sorry. All right, next up this evening is our Home Services Superintendent report. Tim, are you finishing? We have the written report in front of us. Are there questions on the written?
Can I ask you a question? It's been going on for weeks. I'm trying to get.
Does everybody know? Is it a no still, right?
It depends on, is there, one of our need utility operators?
I noticed here the Hall and Compost, the community garden, have we got a plan sorted out for the poison ivy situation for next year?
Oh, for the gardens, the gardens?
Yep.
I'm not a hundred percent. I'm going to talk to her about it first thing tomorrow morning. I know they were talking about the clothes. And they've already done the lots of far. I know they brought a bunch of black earth to put on top of their patch. I can get a little hint, something just in the morning.
Yeah, so, so, so last time I talked to her about, you thought we're good there, that the, any, any of the ivies that was in the garden itself was taken care of. The, the primary concern was with the ivy just outside of the garden area. And he thinks that, that we with, with the, the treatments that we've done, yeah, the mowing and the roofing that he thinks we need to.
It has some weed killer, that's it?
They, they, they did treat more. Yeah.
I'm just a bit.
I have a question. That's sort of better. Follow-up question. What is Billy going downtown all the time?
I'm sorry?
What is the Billy voting? What is that?
Oh, the Billy go down, oh, James. So they go downtown and they clean downtown. Billy go basically look like a big vacuum, but they'll go downtown cleaning for the downtown development area and area. So clean out, we had all the gutters, like the gutters are big. Leaves and stuff built up inside there, or the stuff that's on the brickwork downtown, and then they just go around cleaning it all up, so it makes it more town.
Why is it called that?
Was it? I, that. See, when they first said Billy go to me, I was used to a different type of, just like, all the time. It's the first time I've ever seen one, the background.
So Donna's just, because they eat anything, which leads me to my next question. And I know this might sound crazy, but it's actually something that I've read people have done. Have you listened all about having goats eat the poison ivy? And just to throw that out there.
No, I don't think so.
It's, you know, environmentally friendly and I like goats, so it's.
No, it's something, like I said, I can talk to her. They've never done that.
Your house, right? No, because I'm not allowed to, because it's not, you know, a domesticated pet. So I wanted to bring one when I moved here, but it wasn't allowed.
And a buddy had someone, they ditched the idea once he was there for about two months and then neighbors started to blame him.
Mine was at Nixon Farms.
But then, no, we have not specifically looked into.
It might be something to look into.
You just never know. I like it. Anything not on the report to report?
I'm aware, right. I talked to everybody today and it seemed to be what's on here is discussed. And then I talked to him a little bit.
That one was. Yeah, well.
Have we started storing any equipment in the cold storage next door in here?
I don't get it. Okay. Sorry, I didn't know more form about that. That's somebody else.
Yeah, we, we, we have that.
I didn't think of anything until they were talking about moving in the building, right?
Yeah, we weren't planning on anything until, until the capital project was something we.
Hold that too much?
I, you know, I did, if I could pull off that kind of miracle.
Thank you, your attendants. All right, thank you. Next up is our Community Development Manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. How's counsel this evening?
Good.
Thank you.
I'm fine, thank you. And like Marie, I apologize, I'm not there in person. The husband is ill, so hopefully I'll be back in the office either tomorrow or Wednesday. So you have my report in front of you before I go into any of the verbal updates of which there are none. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Doesn't look like any questions, Michelle.
Okay. Well, I will bow out and let you continue to keep this meeting rolling.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have anything to add to the board commission reports? Okay, anybody have anything to add to the board commission or reports? Yeah. And then, uh, anything to add to the commentary report?
Okay. Yeah. Sort of related to that, because we've been talking about traffic in the city and I've been thinking a lot about. Or whatever reason, the fifth and Dover intersection, I think because I happen to buy that one pretty often, and it did strike me, and there are a couple of, maybe unique things about that intersection, but also just certainly the downtown, just structurally that I think. Might, uh. Contribute to the fact that people roll stop signs. So, one thing I noticed, and this is maybe not, I'm not saying this is new to anybody, but it's sort of a, a problem with me. The alignment of our sidewalks to the actual intersection is such a big right away between where the sidewalk is and where the actual roadway is. And it occurred to me that some people might think, you know, if they don't see pedestrians, they're not gonna stop, you know, where the actual stop sign is, you know, what's supposed to do? They might roll through that stop sign, proceed to the intersection where they can actually see the vehicular traffic. They might not be able to see vehicular traffic in the case of there's on-street parking. So they're not gonna stop the stop sign, which they don't see pedestrians, and then they kind of roll through that, and they don't see a car, and then it's just like this one-way roll and stop. If you compare that to, uh, next to crossing, the right of way, even if you're coming out on Lexington and Danahoe there. The sidewalk is much closer to where the actual intersection is, so there isn't this. Uh, need necessarily to do this double stop, where you're stopping at the stop sign and then you're advancing and stopping where you connect with the traffic. I'm not saying, I don't think there's anything to do about that, uh, but it's just something I noted. The other thing about that particular intersection. Is when you aren't, when you're coming down Main Street, you're turning west onto Dover, I personally think that stop sign is a bit obstructed by a tree that's right there. So I've taken a couple of pictures, I can share them with you. I don't know if somebody wants to look the next time they're there. I don't know if that tree is, I think, by a city property or, uh, residence property. And again, I'm, I'm guessing that people who are flying through there, people who know what their stop sign and it's just their driving behavior. And also that intersection has a sidewalk on the left side when you're coming up near Dover, um, approaching that, and how do you like? That would be, or what's your topic? Uh, the sidewalk on the left and not on the right. So I also feel like there are just some interesting things in terms of digital cues of that particular intersection. Where other intersections, you obviously have the sidewalk on both sides of the intersection. You don't have the stop sign, that's partially through the device, and you, maybe you even have some, one of those white strips on the ground where you see like groups of stop signs. So, again, I'm not suggesting we, you know, invest a ton in this particular intersection or overthink it, but it's just something I've been thinking about and I noticed about the intersection. So something else to your mind as we continue to be there for the resident.
Good.
Um, and we, we can have staff take note of that, um, any instructions to the, to the south side.
They find, yeah, because I thought when we approached it, it seems. At Fifth and Dover?
Yeah, which is where I live.
Yeah, and I've never noticed that.
Yeah, I've never noticed that.
What, the stop sign?
I've noticed that, don't, I've noticed the stop sign, I stop at every time, because I know, well, because there's law too, and because police departments are there. But the, I think that the stop sign at Dover Third is obstructed almost all the time by that overgrown brush that hardly ever gets cut back.
So this is where, so here I was on.
I, I mean, I, yeah.
I don't, right, right. I'm just saying, from this angle, there's a pretty much block in that.
But not when you get up to it.
Right, but I'm just saying, I mean, it's a short slot. Anyway, I don't know that that's the reason. I, I doubt that's the reason why it's blocked.
It's not.
But anything we can do to make it more obvious? Like, stop, I just wonder if that needs to come out. But I will first.
Oh, good luck.
Good luck.
Does it remind me when, when there are people to talk to, deputy about the, you know, every time?
Yeah, so, so I, I asked, um, Al Hunt, our servant. Or, so, sorry, or, or lieutenant, um, to plan for either a meeting in November or December. Uh, he hasn't given me, so which, which date is gonna work best for me?
Okay, I figured on the way inside, thank you. Any other questions on those reports before we get into the second? Okay, Justin, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, so you, you have my report, um, there were a couple of items in the supplement that were sent out. Um, just, uh, kind of briefly summarize those, um. Uh, I did make an offer to an assistant to, uh, her name is Susan Goldstrom. Um, she comes to us from Chavez County, New Mexico, which is where Roswell is located. Um, which is very familiar with, uh, folks and, uh. And he incited. Um, but, uh, we're looking at, at having her start on November eighth. It's, uh, it couldn't come too soon. Um. I've also spoken with a couple of, I, I've spoken with one person about, um, becoming a recording secretary. And, um, Michelle and I met with her last week and she seemed to be interested, so, um, she's gonna watch this meeting and. Um, hopefully we'll get, we'll be able to get her set up to start her next meeting, or, uh, actually, I think she planned to have her start, yeah, planning commission on November first. Um, then we're looking at potentially, um, having someone as a backup to that person. Um, so the person that we've, that we've met with is Pam Lawler, if anyone is familiar with her. Um, she has served as a election inspector for us. So he, he isn't, uh, a stranger to, to the city. Um, and the other person that we're going to be meeting with is, uh, Ashley Elliston Power. Um, who expressed an interest and possibly serving as a backup. Um, so between the two of them, we should be able to cover planning commissions and city council meetings going forward. Great. Um, and to get notice at the end of last week that, um, whatever water state council should be mailing out for calendars. I don't know if anybody's received them yet, but, um, should be either this week or next week. Um, then we'll have a stack up in the office for anybody who wants to fucking get one. And then, uh, get a really good volunteer day on Sunday. Um, I think we had several people, um, who showed up to help out. And, um, were able to make, make pretty good work of, of the slow part in the market. We got, uh. We have the, uh, mold down just in time. Uh, it's a rain day, so. Did they have any questions?
So. Yeah, um, under ordinance updates, Ken, rental inspection ordinance, where did that come from? Where did that get started? And can you just give me just sort of a thumbnail of what they're looking for and what they're gonna be doing?
Yeah, so, so that's been, that's been on there for a little while, um, something that we kind of started looking into and then they got, they got put on pause when COVID hit. Um, and it was initially brought up by a couple of people, um, expressing concerns, uh, folks who, who were renters. Expressing concerns with the, the facilities that, that they were renting. Um, we also had an issue with, um, with a, an apartment duplex that popped fire on Central Street. Uh, and the reported time was that it probably could have been avoided with, with a proper inspect, regular inspection. Um, and so we, we kind of initiated the process of looking into what a rental inspection ordinance could look like, um, that it kind of got, got put on the number. Um, like, I don't know if you have any updates or anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think you just about covered it. I, I know that they, you know, very ordinary draft or very much the draft that come for council or what you were gonna put together to recap of that initial discussion.
I, I could not remember that, and the last we talked about it was Washington County, this would be, why did it participate in something that had to do with rail inspection, so, thank you, I'm glad to get brought up to see.
Yeah, we, we, we had talked about one possible option for doing inspections and enforcing orders was contracting a washout count. And, and seeing if, if they have the capacity to do that.
Well, I've got one more question. What would we have, would this prove some kind of, how regularly are they gonna inspect or would it be the same kind of thing where it's just complaint driven?
So i- i- it would, it would be a, a regularly scheduled thing, and then there would be a checklist of items that, that the inspector would go and.
And that would follow to you?
No, I think that's something that, that would be contracted out for.
That's the Washington, okay. All right, thank you.
Just wanna check to see if my internal timeline is correct with the, uh, Assistant to the City Manager coming on May eighth. It'll be essentially a year and a week that the office hasn't been fully staffed.
That's correct.
Okay. That was, that's way too long. I'm sorry. Oh.
Were there questions to get them? Okay. Uh, I don't have a long report. I will note that I did an interacquisition. Martha Greg. Um, to fill the library board vacancy.
I think that's an excellent choice. I've worked with her before. I think she'll be wonderful.
I have to tell you, it's hard, um, there are three people that all really wanna do it.
Yeah.
And, um. Andrew and Rita can also have the same passion or interest in doing, um. I, I tried to make a good recommendation. I think Martha's a good choice, and I think that if we can get Andrew or Rita involved in our agriculture area, maybe, or something like that. Uh, they have other interests involved, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for that, but. This is a four-year term. I think that ever since I've been in that, I've been the only person on that position with that. You hope it, and, um.
Well, I think that was, personally, I think it was a good choice. I worked with Martha, and she, she's diligent and kind and, you know, hard worker.
So that's included under the consent agenda.
Yeah.
That comes next. Um. Uh, we had, uh, our DDA, uh, it was passed Thursday, and the DDA did authorize staff to issue a round of queue for. Really all scenarios relating to thirty, forty-five broad. But RFP is gonna ask for development partners, if somebody's interested in doing something similar, like North Hope was engaged. It also, Eric Higgins, uh, an outright sale of the property. If someone should choose to arm with that, they'll have to be an all-proves saying. Uh, RFP, and I believe we asked staff to get that out by November first. With, um. Um, receipt of any proposal back, uh, sometime in the first week of January following, when you say how. Well, somewhere on January fifth or sixth, or something like that. And then later that evening on, on, at the next year of fire department meeting. Uh, the board officially accepted the letter that the chief submitted. Um, he's gonna retire after forty-two years as a chief. Am I getting that right? Almost forty-three, forty-two years. He's an agent fee, and, um. So we accepted the resignation, but I guess the resignation, retiring a letter and wishing the chief well. And he's here tonight, so, um, he's done a good job, and, uh. What, six years you've been a list, and at the beginning of the service?
It would be just shy of six.
It's shy of six. It's on the first draft of our budget and spending plan. Hopefully about that in, um, in, kind of, November meeting, we have until the summer, but we'll try to do it in the November meeting with the plan, and so it's, uh, down to the last minute on that.
Yes, I, yeah, I have two, two questions. So, DAFD meetings, where do they usually happen? You, you decided that I was moved to watch your.
Yeah, so, um, traditionally, the DAFD meetings are held at Dexter Council Hall. Um. They should, you know, open room, uh, but, uh, they had an outbreak, opened up a. Sometimes by a few, but. I'm not sure when that started, but everyone thought. Open another location, and I don't know if you've ever been to Lester Johnson Hall, but it's, it's enormous, they have a gigantic room. They could put hundreds in there.
Yeah.
Some of the beds, we just shut up.
So hypothetically, would, would these meetings ever take place at the fire station, or is it appropriate that they would take place at one of the meaningful locations? Is there any, right, the justice taking place around?
We have had special meetings at Station Two, the Dexter Council Station, at the, in the meeting room. You know, mostly firefighters, and then, and then there's very often, I don't know, there's a couple for, we have had the invitation to, boy. Although, uh, on the other, the trucks are.
We did have fun there, but there was very, very cramped, and it was a special situation with the truck, like.
And then regarding the DDA, can you remind me, so, planning commission, sort of procedure of course, planning commission recommends the council, council will. DDA, a similar thing, where they ultimately make recommendations to council for their simple or not, or do the DDA act somewhat independently?
They are technically, they're all legal bodies, although their, their budgets and all financial, major financial things are approved by the city because they're off their own, are. Credit, I would be willing.
But there are other ways that they can act independently?
Yeah. Yeah, but they, but they can hire their own executive director.
Right.
They, 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 they pass them on, but they can, um.
They can, they, they can set their own priority.
Is that like by law?
Yeah, the DDA act, there's a DDA act. We, we can share, everybody.
Right, yeah, I know we talked about it in the past, I just wanted to, to be reminded.
Yeah, no, good question, I'm, I'm working.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, they, they, you mentioned that there could be. Sale of that property. Uh, that's one of the options I did say for that. Does that include the two properties continued to there, or is it just the properties that we know of in, where the two old homes were there on Broad Street? And, and, and where Dacko was and the parking lot, you know? So we, we drew the boundary, and I will have Justin, who can make the note to have, to, uh, to email council the draft once Michelle gets it cleaned up. The, the map is the entire area, Paul. It's shown as five parcels, I believe, is what they kind of break out of, but it's, everything is thirty, forty-five broad. Um, then where the substation was, that's those two on that side of the road, and then the three top parcels on the opposite side, which are the two houses and the parking lot. And, and it's, and it's written generically to say any and or all, you know?
Okay.
If, if, if somebody's just interested in one, and they can come back with a smaller idea versus what they have. Definitely. Yeah, there, there, there's an option where they can pick up or take what North Hope had and start from there, or there's an option where they can propose their own idea for a process, and then the third is. To see if anybody's interested in the sale. And, and the logic behind that is, if we're starting over, we might as well be as flexible at this point now to see what comes back. Um.
Michelle, is there a question?
Oh, sure.
Hi, I, if you would like, I could share the screen so people could see what you were talking about, John, if that would be helpful.
If you wanna put the map up, that's great, Michelle.
Okay, one moment, please. Let me get to that page. Um, I hear Paul asked the question about whether in the RFP we were identifying whether a property needed to be for sale or not?
He just asked which parcel did we say could be for sale?
Okay.
And I told him any or all are, are, are in the RFP that way.
Okay, can you see it now?
We can now, yes.
Okay.
It's bisected by Broad Street, which is the dashed blue line right down the center of Broad is there.
Mm-hmm.
And there's two parcels towards the park. The box in the middle is the substation parcel, and that, the other around it is what we commonly call thirty, forty-five broad. And then there's the two homes property, the two home properties over here. And then the parking lot, and then the, then the, the old, the parcel that's next to, um.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. Does that help, Paul?
Yeah, I didn't know, it's two different, you know, homes that were making sure they know.
Yeah, well, the, the, you know, the DDA is anxious to. Yeah, well, you know, the DDA is anxious to try and get something else with it, you know.
Well, it could be, I mean, certainly possible. Well, if somebody wants to do that, it's a good decision to buy it and add some of the home parts and put it in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And anything, you know, anything related to development is still subject to the planning. You know, somebody brings more than idea, so it's not, there's no it's just all opt out of people.
Did they talk at all about preserving any portion of that property?
They don't talk.
Okay. All right.
I think the greater sentiment, the greatest sentiment in the room was that the economy is still good. Things are happening. We should be trying to find a way to have something happen there. Or a small piece of it or all of it. Okay. Other questions for me? I just wanna publicly recognize Paul Miller, Don Miller, Joanne Lander, Anne Marquess, Paul Evernoff, Justin Vire, I don't know Jacob, our employee's last name, Connor. Connor, they were all out there yesterday helping on the, the parking on the hill. Let me tell you, that hill, when you walk up those steps, hit the steps or something. Working on that hill is not easy. It's not easy. I'm doing it today. What did we, what was the, we planted about five hundred little springs or something like that? It's a lot of little digging. Fun. So anyway, thank you all.
And it feels like we trampled them running up and down the hill, but also they're going to sleep anyway, so they'll be back next year.
We'll see what comes up. Okay, just a reminder that there's an updated bills and payroll amount.
Got it.
Got it? Okay, thank you. Then I'll, I'll move on to consent agenda with.
Yeah, I move into the three items listed on consent agenda. Bills and paywalls amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents, the appointment of my break to the library board and approval of the holiday, like three.
My agenda says that Martha Gray is on the parks and recreation.
Hey. Yeah.
Do you have that at all?
Yeah, I, well, I'm, I'm, I'm a member. The memo was wrong.
Okay. I'll just get that call.
It is parks, it's the library.
It is library board, yeah. Yeah, and we'll be in a term, four-year term ending September. Well, I think November, whatever, October, twenty-fifth, that month.
September thirty is twenty-one five.
Okay, so what's the negative behind September thirty?
Those would be the fault, but I actually, that's the end of their terms, kind of like our most important.
Okay, fair enough.
Do you second that motion?
I do not have a second to motion for that.
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Well. Motion by Fisher, Senator President. President, this call of vote will prove the very second agenda as corrected.
Tom Flanders, Rob.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yeah.
Hopper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Motion there is. Okay, everybody. We're down to unfinished business item L one on discussion of fire station area principles. We've got a sign we've done up for a last meeting and definitely in early eight thirty we decided to move on so everybody could be here somehow and talk about that. We're off to begin by suggesting some principles or especially the processes here or what would kind of happen tonight or.
I'm having to start. I like what was laid out in the memo. So I can hear the demo came from him, so I the stuff that you laid out, appreciated, and these things well thought out. Principle, I guess, that you did discuss stuff that you laid out. I think. Yeah, I think twenty-five. I kind of think where I'm at, you know, I, we got this binder and I'm, you know, continued to work my way through it. There's a lot of information in there. In terms of where I'm personally coming from, so I don't know if this, I'm sort of jumping to step two and I'm not necessarily, we had to follow this stuff with everybody. Letting you know where I'm at. So I think step two is that my my opinion, I guess, is that there's been so much done in it and have a, you know, some sort of snap out of that in our binders and I'm so appreciative of that. I appreciate how much work people have spent on this over the years and years and years. There's been a lot of public comment. There's been a lot of hard work by council members, subcommittees, et cetera. So I personally am not looking to reinvent the wheel and start completely over. I think by getting the binder, it was my way of getting up to speed on everything that has been done. And I think I'm kind of at a point where, again, I'm still working through the binder, but I would be comfortable starting the discussion. But again, only for reality, at a point where we're considering sort of the last two options, which was looking at eighty-one forty and looking at the new bill thing and I don't think we go through the problem pounds of those two things, then, you know, I'm close to having the information I need, I think, to be able to make a decision either way. I mean, my sense of reading through this is that previous, you know, there were previous majority opinions to that eighty-one forty aside and only look at any construction. And what my sense is that there are other people who still currently said I don't feel that way. And so I would be happy to jump to a point where we're looking at, okay, there is one sort of one group of people who think it's the new bill that the map property, and then there's one group of people, I guess it could be property now, matter of view. And there's another group of people potentially who think it's not. So I don't know how much I need to do to see before all that. I would just kind of jump into those two things and then having the discussion about how do we choose among those, what are the trade-offs, and some of the fire chief. I mean, I'm also generally of the mind, I mean, in terms of guiding principles for myself. I understand that we're part of this interlocal agreement. I, as a representative for the city of Dexter, would place the needs of the city of Dexter. I would give them a priority and I would respect and trust the opinion of the fire chief. If he feels, I guess I would trust that he has made the decision on the trade-off of relocating potentially further away from the rest of the service area. I would trust that he's, he's decided those trade-offs and felt that they were not a net detriment to the entire service area. I don't, I personally, as a council member, don't feel like it's my place to be weighing those trade-offs. I feel like I'm, my job is to make a trade-up, you know, weigh the trade-off as it pertains to the city of Dexter. Cause that's why I was elected to be that. So probably through a lot of things out there, some were sort of general guidance principles for myself, some were where I think we could, where I'm real comfortable starting in the process. But I'm happy to hear from, and we go.
Very.
Another thing that, another thing that could be a starting point is how much money do we want to spend on this? Realistically, roughly what? Cause I think there's gonna have to be some compromise here someplace. No? Throw that out there.
Well, I'll respond to teams that I've run the committee and I've run the council room this whole time, so. A year, so I, I just, kind of like, we've gone through this and that. That the older members, I guess, who say they weren't even here, run through this, should have heard it, and the new members, I think they are they've been building up and all their other activities that they've done there that they've come up to speed, or they are, they're not. Their activities there, so I don't think necessarily we have to, you know, go through all that backwater just to get to this point here. And I think they identified what's down to, right? I don't think there's any other proposals that are viable. And so that's why the decision was made. I don't target. You need to want on our street there. So I'm going to go on, plus we clearly need to go through step by step values and all those kinds of things too. And they can intercept too, there's, there's time that you can say, oh, I like this because of this year, this year value, I want to feel there, so. There's a lot of things that we can put out there. And especially, sure. It's too. She has, should have a say in this and should have some kind of process where he can be relied upon to give us information that he thinks is best required of, even though he's reading. Still, we professionally do that for the end, so. And remembering that we are a sovereign body ourselves, we're the city of Dexter, that anything else we've done, any other government has not been necessarily valid, but it should be at least recognized that they are there, they have their opinions, but we didn't, we we even said anything about their fire hall purchase or where it was gonna be when they did it, or how big it should be and how many how many processes they had to go through, through that, we kept our hands off. That's their, you were solving, you were nothing to it. What they did or what they haven't done, it's not important to me. But I think they, they recognize that the same thing, they kept their hands off. Our process is different. I don't think you've heard anything from any of their, except for down the chart last, but I don't know if you're on the the same.
I agree with both Jamie and Paul. I in various points of it, I really appreciate the binder, the work that has gotten into it. As an archivist and a librarian, it just makes me so happy that it's a binder. And, and just being able to, to read of all the processes and the decisions and the conversations and not only within, you know, with the council, but also with the public is just, it's a very nicely put together for somebody like myself who is new to the city and new to council. I really like the, the steps and ideas that are presented in the memo, and I think it is valuable, not just for us as the council, but also for the public to know not only our backgrounds and how we are approaching this as individual council members, but also as a body, what are the guidance principles or the values that we are putting for approaching this? There is a lot has been done that can be a starting point, a foundation for us, and I think that has been very nicely presented in this folder. Going through it and the binder, going through it, I felt that I could see what has been done throughout the years. And, and I like that we, we consider that and really start somewhere with, with the two places, as Jamie mentioned, or somewhere around that area. And, and kind of maybe my hope is that with all the work that has been done, it is easy to kind of go back and say, oh, we did this or we did this, and I'm hoping that this council reviewing this and working on this plan to really have a forward-facing approach. And as, as much as so much work has been done in it and not to minimize that, let's just move forward and get this done. That's, that's the approach that I feel I would like to take.
Well, I don't mumble. I'll take this off. I'm gonna start with a quote from Ted Theodore Logan. Bill on Ted's Excellent Adventure, "The only true wisdom consists of knowing you know nothing." And I start that by not saying imply that any of us are dummies. But when you're at this policy level, there are so many things that we don't understand that works. How really goes work, how often they should be used, why you need to use it, what happens if you don't. And so I'm going back again, for forward-looking purposes, the process that we used for the sewer treatment plant. We basically gave the charge to staff. We want something that will meet what Eagle says we have to do. And we want something that is efficient and will last a long time, and go do your research. And we sent staff out, well, they went on their own to, to other treatment plants. They got the design back. They came back. And he said, here's, here are the things we want, and we're like, that's a little bit more than we want. Can we cut that out? Cut, cut some of it out. And I'm really sad we didn't get a break room for them because that's, that would have been really useful for their everyday use of the space. So I bring that up because we it's important for us to have a knowledge of the limits of our knowledge so that we can ask questions. I'd love to pay a million dollars for a fire station too, but it's not gonna buy us anything that is anywhere near what we need to do. And I'll give the example of, if you haven't bought a car for fifteen years and you go out today, last time you bought a car, it was seventeen thousand dollars. Try that today. Even before pandemic, the, the entry price for most cars, the average car solding is forty thousand dollars. So when we start sitting in our minds that we have to be aware that there's a cost for the things that's driven by the mission. As far as expectations, I've, I've touched on this again in the past a little bit, but I think it's important for our discourse going forward. I would, I would hope we refrain from use of the rhetorical flourish need versus want. And I say that because it's, it's kind of a lazy way to avoid actually engaging on, on different positions. And it's very easy to manipulate. In this case, it's not very informative because we do not need to have twenty-four hour staff for fire department. We don't, we can have an on-call, full-on call. I know it's, it's difficult to think of, but city of Fenton, which is magnitudes larger than the city of Dexter, has one hundred percent on-call staff for paid on-call. They don't have people sitting in the building twenty-four hours. We do not need to have medical services, medical runs with our fire department, but we've determined that's important. And so there's it's, it's a bit lazy engagement, I guess is where I'm going. And we we all have a level of service of mission that is beyond the bare minimum, putting out fires when the building catches on fire or cutting people out of the car. And which benefits everybody. I hope that we would, when we speak of this and think of it not as just spending money, but rather as an investment, like we did with the wastewater treatment plant. When we got the airator there, that was a lot of money for that variable speed blower, but it saves us money on utilities every month. We could buy, we could invest in a fire station with metal on the exterior and drywall on the inside. Or we could get masonry on the inside and the outside. It's gonna be a lot larger investment for the masonry. But I can tell you, I've seen two comparable buildings built at the same time. One of them looks like it's aged decades. The other looks like it's brand new. The one that looks new was the one that spent a lot of money to build up front. And one of the things that's impressed me about this community is and one of the things that continues to attract me here is that we've made the decision to do things the right way. We've invested money in OPEB and retirement well before most of the other folks did it. That's not easy. Mayor Kio ran for Board of Trustees back when we had trustees on a platform of, I wanna raise your sewer rates. Because, look, our pipes aren't good. We need new pipes. That's not an easy thing to. That's not an easy thing to do. We've made the decision, when we tear up streets, we're going to touch everything underneath it. Because it's in the long run, much more efficient. So I hope we frame it in those terms that as we weigh the cost of investing in a building, we recognize that there are benefits for building certain buildings. Some of them will be to the physical building itself. Some of them are to how fire department functions. The, well, so I mentioned the, the medical services. If we are aware that we want to continue to have medical services, that's going to affect the design of the building. It's going to affect the type of storage spaces you have because they're different from other things. And so if you, I've seen stations where it's done really poorly, where they have to have storage in three different places. Because they've got the main storage place and then the one new truck. And they have to spend time schlepping stuff back and forth, which isn't a useful use of the time. I guess that's all, I'm done now. Thank you for allowing me to bill and take a vote.
Well, I, I'll go. I tried to. I'll step forward. I wrote down a couple of things, I'm not sure they're perfect now. I will write them down. I put down, we believe just the top priority of our fire service and our fire station should be to protect those people and those assets that are most vulnerable. I didn't get to the therefore, that was my food and weed part. And then number two, I put down, we believe that our fire station should be safe for use by the public and the firefighters. And then the third one I had was. I realize it's subjective. We believe that the service should be affordable. And that, those are the three that I shot at. Those are the three very important things that I was throwing out there. And in terms of, they're just a little bit. No, I know, I want to. You know, I'm, I'm probably guilty of carrying on too much background. On this topic, there's too much baggage. It's, it's, it's been a, it's been a topic that was as recently been very charged, but it wasn't always that way. When I, that mentioned when I joined council and talking about raising the water and the sewer rates, that's how I really knew where I should have been coming. But when I joined the board in 2004, there was only one fire station in this district and it was the one that still exists today at AB 140. We were about half the size, population line in the village. That we are today. And I don't know how that ever captured, but I assume they were less than what they are now. Well, we hardly ever talked about our fire service. Or the station to that man, that really early on, it was, it was always just something and maybe that's what I used to say. The two best things we have in the village are our fire station and our public works park. And you want to put in one before the other, you'd be saying two best assets, but they're both really well done. But we always, we spent very little time. Everybody will comment on the fire service because between the sheriff and the firefighters, when a call was made, the response was there. And they, they went and did the job and that's still today. That, that part of the service that, that go and serve and get it done is still, is still there. You know, and then, and then as we, as we move forward, maybe five, six years, you can see this in the back of the, you can see that stuff. At one time, we were talking about putting everything at AB 140. This fire station, the police, we were going to have it all right there. And that wasn't, that wasn't the horrible idea at the time, it was where we were in our process. And we sold it out as a backdrop of that and now we're here with this part of our story role and. But I'm, I'm, I guess I'm most interested in how wrestle with some of the things that are subjective. You know, like I, I hear all that I want our service and our station to be able to focus on protecting those that are most vulnerable. Now, that could be suggestive, subjective and so on. To me, our seniors are most vulnerable, most vulnerable. Some might say the schools are most vulnerable. Okay, but the people and the assets are the two things that are helpful to that in this in this world. You know, things like response time or what do you mean? I won't kind of build out today with any of that. You know, John Char, he tried to say that last week and then made the comment that exactly what he said in a minute, but we should have a guiding principle to prevent firefighters from getting cancer. So I'm all for that. That's not a bad, I guess, that isn't supportive, I don't know how anybody would say it isn't. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what do we I use the right verb. What can we choose to do? Then that was the, the, what if we choose to do the balance in all of that? That's been the hardest thing for me. I've not, I've not seen an option that I feel does that yet. And that's been my goal, is to decide on it. So thank you for this. Then I'll step towards work for that step two, but I that's kind of a lot. But I'm open, I, I pledged at the start of this term to all of you that we would have a fair, open process and we'd start together, whatever it is that we want to start. I think it's understood that each of us is really starting from maybe a little contented spot. And the goal that Justin, I think, has laid out with several of these workshops, monthly to keep the top of trash is to help us all get to the same starting spot.
One of the things that I wrestle with sometimes is that we say, they didn't ask me about what I could build there, what should happen. But the bottom line is that we're all in it together. What they do and what he does and what we do somehow or another, that's got to come together. There's got to be a way to make that work instead of everybody operating independently, but calling themselves an area wide fire department. So I wrestle with that, what is the right way to approach that? I don't know. But it does matter to me, I think. There are two other facilities. How do they relate to what we're going to be trying to do?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your perspective, Sean, and that's it. I, I agree, I think, thinking about the guiding principles or the values we put on this, it, it will help us step away from the details. And if there are, if we agree on setup values and guiding principles that we want to approach this by, if there are differences in opinions in terms of the details of, you know, location and money and material and all sorts of things, then we can take this stuff back and go to those guiding principles and have those as our direction, I know. So the, the three that you mentioned are, to me, great start points of, of values that we want to have, you know, we want to protect the people and the assets of this city. We want to protect the firefighters that put their lives in danger for protecting the people as the the assets of this city. And we want something that is doable by for us and also someone that Jamie mentioned to me is important also that, yes, we, there are aspects of that local agreement we have. But we are the City of Dexter Council. And we want to think about our citizens, our constituents. And at the same time, keep in mind the agreement that we have. And, and I think again, to me, another good thing for, for the guiding principles and having that is that it is then clear for our citizens of Dexter to know how we are approaching this, what are the main points? And any decision we make at the end of the day, we can go back and say, these were the, the values we chose because these are the values we, are the values of Dexter. And the decisions we made on the details are based on this, so we can have that conversation with our community.
I have one second question and then I'll follow up. How much would the waste water for this plant?
Over the years, there's been multiple, multiple improvements. Then the last one, about six million. The last one, I think.
And that's something we fund out internally, we have money.
We bonded for it.
To me, that's something a large number, and I think probably most people don't know that we did that with city money, like a million dollars.
We have, we have very much discussion on that. At any point in time, whether we do it or not, we have our money.
Yeah.
That's fair, we did. We thought it needed to be done.
And then just to follow up with what, I'm not much saying. I mean, I think, I think it is good to talk about our guiding principles, but I do think ultimately it will come down to each of us individually, how we weigh the trade off. So I would not expect, I guess, for the processing, I would not expect that we are all going to, even if generally we, we believe, you know, it's important, you know, the exact right things, I generally agree that those things are important. The lives of, you know, the firefighters, the lives of our citizens, honor of the everybody, et cetera. But I think ultimately how we weigh those, I think it will come down to trade offs. And each of us might value those things, let me just really. So I think the guiding principles are helpful. I still think ultimately there, there will likely almost certainly be individual differences in how we weigh the trade offs and how you find those principles or to what particulars or things.
Yeah, no question. But, but Paul, we, you know, we maybe didn't spend a lot of time when we got to that particular upgrade. But we had had years, just like the fire station, years of talking about the different components of the plant that we operate. And we did, we did the, you know, the screw pumps, when we did the screw pumps. And we finally did the, actually, I asked Tim, did we have any water in the equalization basin?
I'm sorry?
Did we have any water in the equalization basin?
They did.
They were after the, and we did the equalization basin, you know, first because
filtration, because they need filtration, that's the interest.
Right, right, we were, our plan was really, we didn't want it to get innovative. So we actually have done multiple phases of investment in a disaster plan over, you know, many, many, many years. So we maybe didn't talk about as much of the spending of time on six, but we, we knew that that was coming. They had to find the global of the other things that we were doing before that, that makes sense. I know this is the beginning, I think that's the second one. Also, there were no alternatives, you know, we were weighing one thing against another. If you only weighed half of that against a whole house, we weren't going, well, let's cut this out and that just didn't buy with that. For me, we didn't have that discussion at all because it was and obviously the people that were on the council, we didn't, this needed to be done and we made each other's sense. We had to have it done. I mean, an hour later, one of the others, later was going to cost us more money. And we were ready to lock. You don't feel what you're doing. Well, I, I think the, so now that you touched on it, I want to try and report to you, I think. I think the importance of having some of those principles written down is to ensure its unity and whatever we've done for, we're, we're a plus for the financial support. We know we're going to need to do that. Unless we, although we had a different option than I think we're looking at. And at some point in time, we're going to do that, well, it's heaven knows. They're telling the story, I think that's good. But I was, I was, I didn't know how this professional could go today and who was going to do it. Justin, you're taking notes. But I mean, and maybe you can type up the notes and get them off to us. What we said or whatever. You know, if everybody could contribute one or two, we believe statements. Maybe for the next meeting, we can have that put down on paper and just see how common it's all along, see how we work them together a little bit. That makes sense, and I know the next time we're talking about this, we jump to plumbing options, right?
Which, when I, when I put it together, you know, like just threw that out there as an option. We can
Not do that or do that.
We can not do that or do that and come back to guiding principles first.
I, I think it'd be great if we could get a list of, however, I mean, we, you know, all basically agree on, I agree. Maybe there's some subjectiveness in how they're applied. But we've got to start somewhere together. If there's any time to keep reading all that stuff. Oh, absolutely. Look, I, I don't like that to talk about.
All right, well, I think we've got, we can put that aside and.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of me and timing, I think this is fine, I think we can review that at the next time. I would say, you know, I'm eager to, and again, maybe I don't want to, you know, jump somewhere too fast. I would be ready to review the proposals, my understanding of the sponsor, pre-gets, we're ready to put to a vote. But two different times, I think, a proposal and there are probably delays. So, yeah, I would be happy to consider almost, you know, the two of an ultimate, ultimate, you know, proposals. I think if we get ourselves aligned or, you know, talk through the technical thing. For me, I think the next step would be then looking at the proposals and then seeing how that works. But again, we'll be waiting to see how the next conversation goes. I just want to let people know where I'm at in terms of how, like, I don't really want to delay this, I think, but I do think this is a worthwhile step. Well, in short order, I would be ready to.
What was Ted's middle name?
Ted Theodore Logan.
She made an answer?
Yeah. If you present my retirement. This is a great conversation. It's a fun conversation.
It's a fun conversation to have a long, long time ago. Um, I just wanna talk about a couple of points were made. And this is kind of not in random order, because I've been speaking, I was trying to write, but. Um, first. This is a big decision and it's most expensive decision we can imagine as a municipality. I think the challenge that you have here is that. Because it's a interlocal agreement with an area fire department, you don't have the control. Of what the fire department does or how it operates, like you did with, uh, the wastewater treatment. That was pretty easy, it was your own employees, your own people, uh, that were talking and telling you what you needed. And you could rely on, you trust, you know, they're here every day working with you where the fire station's a little different because it's a, DAFD is a separate organization. They're, they're not here, DAFD itself determines, um, what are the base services? What do we feel the community needs? Do they want EMS? Do they want fire? Do they want, uh, technical rescue as that? DAFD board has to decide that and city council or Dexter township, Webster township really have little choice in that. Since I've been here, we've never had a, a public. Survey, if you will, to the entire DAFD response area, that what's important to you. Uh, I just had to go with kind of the, the same philosophies that I felt were here from the beginning. And so we continue to do those, those services. With those services comes. Certain things that are needed within the fire department, the kind of trucks, how many people, what kind of offices, things like that that, that drive what we need. And then there's like, I think one of the challenges that we've had is that. This board on occasion is asking me time and time again. Was why do we need to put trucks where we need to? Well, is that really a Dexter city decision or is that a DAFD board decision? And, and so I gave you information over time and says, here's what I believe is a fire chief based on DAFD. And based on your discussions, this is what I believe it needs to be in the city. Right? And so I, I think that's important because that's all DAFD driven. And so when I gave that and provided that to you. That's the parameters that you need to walk, work around, and I think that's where perfect coming in these values and principles is. Okay, the, the chief or DA, as a representative DAFD has told us what the needs are. You're gonna have this many trucks, this many people, these offices. Okay, now where do our values come in and our principles about how we put to get that together and, and at this point. Um, you've got a floor plan that was put together by partners and architect. The idea now is to take a look at that and really apply your principles and values to that and say, hey, you know, the spaces aren't gonna change. The size of the, the bay isn't gonna change, the build, the vehicles are there, that's a DAFD determination. So the question is, what do we wanna put in those banks? Do we wanna put the, the primal vet system? Do we wanna put the cruise mall system? Do we wanna put the air king ventilators in? I don't, that's all great to me. That kind of goes back to what Sean, uh, Zach said, is we don't know. And I've made a, an effort over time. To provide that information to you, but it's very complicated. Is we have so many agencies that are drivers to us. The EPA, NFP, OSHA, BioSHA. Uh, maybe DNR, Eagle, all those down. And every time somebody says, chief, why can't we just do this? Well, there's probably other things that need to be considered in there before we just do that. And so the challenge is, and I can't teach you all everything there is to know, and I appreciate that thought comes up, is I struggle all the time. To try to say, well, here, we need this because, and then I always get that, but why? But why? But why? And, and it's not that anybody's stupid or not that they're, they're intelligent and little kids. But you could why something forever and unless you've got forty years in the business. You probably can't create that answer well enough. And I haven't been able to articulate it well enough to you because the whys haven't stopped. And in some cases, they've been news. It's some good, some, some, in my opinion, bad, if they've stopped this project, they're slowing this project down. But what I'm hearing tonight, I don't know that that's gonna be the case in the future. I think you've made some, some giant steps here. The. City is kind of locked in with the interlocal agreement, I mean, it, it does say that the city will have to maintain the station. Which is considered a competitive station. Uh, it is unfortunate that the municipality don't coordinate better or didn't. But what's done is done to township stations and done what they're doing. You guys depend on the last ones on the block, how do we make it work so that DAFD? Uh, gosh, could you imagine if the city says, well, gee, we only wanna buy this much building, this is all we wanna spend. And we build that building and I end up having to sit. Four or five of my trucks outside because none of the municipalities are dressed. You're kind of the last guy on the block here. Uh, and that challenge, I'm not even gonna begin to try to address that, that's between you and the other municipality. But, uh, you know, I appreciate what I'm hearing here, the values is, is really important. Sean mentioned, uh, you know, what do we do for cancer? That goes back into the values and principles after we get a layout is, okay, is this gonna work for that? Is, is it going to help reduce that risk? And if not, do we need to put another system into the building? Do we need to add this feature or take this feature away? Uh, and sometimes those values and principles. In my experience, will actually drive the cost off, you start putting it together and you think, man, I'll feel guilty if I don't do that. Now all of a sudden, you could find out that, uh, you know, your building went from an eight million dollar project to a ten million project. Because your values and principles were. Better than we thought. Were drove you to that situation, and I will tell you as, as a fire chief. I won't be here, but I hope your next fire chief is contracting that. I, I would hope that your next fire chief at some point would take your guiding principles as well and hold you in check. Because it can get out of hand, you can start doing more things that are, are gut based. And golly gee whiz, why don't we do this? And then we start having to cut out some of the other things that we actually need, and so there's a balance we had. And whether I'm the guy here to help you with that or whether you do after I retire, uh, hire another guy, another consultant, as Zach's often talked about. Hopefully that person can tell us, keep those values and they're just, we can't pay for everything. You can't pay for anything and believe me, there's an unwritten document thing to keep in view to, uh, prevent cancer in the firehouse. And it will cost you a lot, one of the tried well. So I hope you hire somebody, um, and if not me, back or forth. Assistant, that will help keep those values in check as well. I've never been the guy here to say, we need this because it's the most expensive. I've never tried to drive this project to the max. I tried to keep it within reason and create that balance on my side, back to. The comment about. We don't know or we don't know. And I'm, I don't wanna drive you into that and, and take advantage of, you don't know, put this in the building, we need it. I hope that I give a new explanation to each and everything that we really need in there, so. Very encouraged about this, I want, I don't wanna keep going on here, uh, but again, I'm still here to answer questions. Uh, encouraging, encouraged in this conversation tonight and hopefully it gets a good jumpstart on, on where. So, is there any questions?
Thanks for that, and I just. Thanks for your thing. You have a balance of things that I should pick out? And share, we can all, if there's something else to go on. We just kinda told them about the publications. Zach?
One more, this doesn't need notes. I just wanna share a bias, um, that I've got, um, that I've been struggling with this past year, so maybe longer. Um, so this is. An important thing for me, um, I've signed, like, a contract in two thousand fifteen. Where we know we had to do something, we haven't done anything since. Um, it's important because I have relatives who've. Been the folks who say, I'm gonna run out to that harm and try to save all the people. And I, in my nature, I'm both very cynical and very. Uh, optimistic, which is really interesting mix. And I'm struggling with, it's very difficult for me to see anything happen still, this has been much better conversation I think we've had than any time. And so, please prove me wrong, some of my. And get this conversation, my bias, so if you hear me or I'm making a cranky face or whatever. Our city has been told for years that. We don't need as much, we don't need that much money. Um, and rule of thumb is twenty-five to thirty-three percent of people are gonna vote against any village ever, even if it's for saving puppies and kittens. And I've. It's stressful for me to see that we need to do something. And we can't get out of our way. To do it. And as a result, the costs are going up. And, and or the, the building that we invested in is going to be less, which means the service that will be available for the city and for the community will be less. The other thing, uh, we have a neighbor between us who was, uh, in her nineties, I think, was Ann in her nineties there? Who needed medical services. Um, and the fire truck was the first flash in white that got there. If you look at the interlocal, it says the main fire station has to be in Dexter, but the main station is the offices. Right? That's essentially what makes it the offices. The interlocal essentially says the communities can make available leasing space, doesn't mean they have to, it's that. If a firefighter trips and falls and breaks his neck going down the little stairway, that's not up to code. I can very easily imagine the, the fire association saying, we're not overnighting in that building anymore. And now if there are emergencies, because we haven't addressed it. The, the vehicles are gonna be coming from five miles that way, four miles that way. And so that's, that stress that I'm feeling is that there could be real consequences to inability to act. And so I just wanted to share that with folks, having seen with the cranky face or something like that. Thank you.
Well. Any other thoughts? I got a lot of them, I'll wait till next meeting to, uh, pass them and get to that. Okay. Okay, vote in your business.
That's, sorry.
Sure.
You did make a comment that that one's a, or you. Same as.
Yes, if it's something that, that one of the same hasn't been said, or you think of it afterwards, or you're better off saying it with the, yeah. Have you everybody a week to start the sound so it's kind of. Okay, um. New business, uh, M one, inspection of several equipment. I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Sure, so, um. Well, we, we, we had a discussion a couple of nights earlier this year, um, on this topic. And, um. I don't know if we really have a conclusion. Yeah, and I, I do during, of course, I wore sessions, it was talked about, bringing that for. For, for further conversation, um. We do have and, and will continue to have pieces of equipment trucks, et cetera. That will be, that will be for replacement. And. You know, we, we talked about, you know, if we can trade them in, you know, what can we do with that? Is there any palette or any desire helpful to. Pursue something that would allow us to. Go back to trying to sell pieces of equipment?
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the. Trading sort of workaround to the. So I think one thing we talked about in the past, we'd either. Paying for pieces of equipment to the public or vote, so we see what that looks like. Maybe even before going to them with a. Council initiative amendment to take out the principal equipment. I think, I don't know, I think it's been more than one equipment, right, that we've demonstrated that, or is it just the one?
I, I believe we've only created one piece of equipment, I, I, I think we had a truck that came up that we did not create.
So have.
Scott's opinion is still the same? I believe. There's a real little distinction.
Yeah, I mean, the ballot language is clear. But including all real personal property and equipment. So I don't know if there's a order of operations, you say about some things to a time when there's an election that. We have our plan anyway, there's, you know.
Zach? Um, I was not in favor of the charter amendment. Whether it applies to just real property or, uh, personal property. For many reasons, I would be concerned about this body initiating a charter amendment on our own, because I don't. I don't believe that most folks knew what they actually voted for. If I had a magic wand, that I, well, if I had a phone, I'd call up Dan and say, find a wheelbarrow we can sell. And have an election, shall the city of Dexter sell this wheelbarrow? Uh, and that's the extreme example, but I don't think until folks. Face what the actual charter has been amended to, will they realize that. Why we're trying to change. That's it.
That emotion sound a little wrong?
We got one to sell, yeah. Or an old billy goat, that'd be interesting.
I don't know that we can actually have that election, but I think that we're onto something whereby you could. Get an example out there and when you're trying to explain yourself. Use a wheelbarrow as a, as an example, when you're trying to explain it to us and so that they know the difference between what they're really doing and what they thought they were doing.
I'll say wheelbarrows a bit extreme and truck, but.
Pick whatever you want, but I think whatever you guys, you send a consistent message.
Are there other pieces of personal property that we? Kind of have them sorting up the science vehicle or something? Has there been other types of personal property besides vehicles or equipment that we've sponsored?
Not for sale.
I mean, that you've done on uphill, I mean, they've all been.
Uh, once, once the charter amendment passed.
I mean, you know.
Not, 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 not wheelbarrows, but like the, the wheat machine, um. Uh, the chipper, that, that, that kind of stuff we would have.
Is there a minimum dollar amount or like, do you think the lowest value?
And the, 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 the most that has been done for uphills is probably. One to three thousand dollars.
And do you have a regular to the election every year?
Yep, so, um. Uh, upcoming in twenty twenty-two, we will have in August. In twenty twenty-four, there would be a march office.
And we added some of the, to the, to the, to the cost of to do that. I mean, I don't know, I mean, what the replacement plan schedule is. I don't know if there's just a way to get that, because an alternative approach is that you just can have a bunch of equipment on the. On those regular, special elections, you know, possibly. Um. To hold that election, you know, possibly.
I mean, yeah, if you're putting it on a regularly scheduled election, there's no additional possible.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't have the schedule in front of me, what we're planning on. She's not always telling me, but I've known this setup. I can imagine a turn where someone might align within the election. But maybe not, so it could be curious to see what the future anticipated equipment sales are and what the future are going to set the election makeup.
I personally would like us to be able to. If it is what the citizens. Would vote for to get us back to being able to sell anything as possible because. Even if we put that truck on the next regularly scheduled election, it's lost most of its value by then that it had. So by not being able to do this. When that wasn't even the intended purpose of the charter amendment by the people who put it together. We're losing money, we're just losing money, and I'm not for that. I guess I don't know, I mean, I'd be fine with. Putting something on the next regularly scheduled. Election as an example, but then what what do we do from there? I mean, we all, I guess procedurally, I don't really. I don't really know, I mean. Why shouldn't we just put for a. Amendment generated by us, I mean, I guess. I see frozen cons to it, but as I said, like, this was not the intention of the charter amendment. That was passed, this is an unintended consequence. And I think we need to fix it. So I think that I don't have a problem with us. Putting it on, you know, on the ballot, but I do understand that if people aren't educated. That that has the potential to fail, so. I guess I'm not, I mean. I just don't want to sit around. You know, try to schedule things with their, when we're selling things, I think we need to just take care of it.
What would you say? Maybe dedicated. Educational plan and bring it forward as a separate issue.
Yeah, that that one, okay, now this one we try to just do it the same.
No, that's the work.
Wait, say.
Well, so. I gotta land to a little bit of all this. If we're gonna do something in the board. That's we try to do it. Zach's extreme example is. Right, he's looking very well presented and very easy to understand. So, you know, how do we take the education part of your suggestion? And example. And maybe the concept we would consider putting forward amendment, how do we test that? We've been out there to see what people think. I don't know, maybe you should have been helpful to that. It's our newsletter, you know, but we could, we could explain. If 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 we all admit that's an unintended consequence. You know, we can explain that that role in discussing this and talking about it is to practice so that we aren't. Having stuff like that, you know, go two years when. It could get a thousand dollars, it could get somewhere higher than that, but we, one, two years, it was, you know. We need to be able to react quickly when we want to sell something. Right.
Especially on something that depreciates in value like the vehicle, I mean, and if we're not using it, who knows if that vehicle is even going to start to you now.
Right, I mean. Again, there is, there is schedule, and you could. There are ways to go is you got the. You know, you had to care, citizens, every two years, you need to come in and vote to sell because. Sell it, I don't want to do. Yeah, but that, but whenever something becomes. A automatic, we need that.
I, the 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 this just came to mind. I I I don't know about that, that it would rise to the level of. Valuable personal property, but we we do have those Dale Fisher books. That we had talked about, so.
So that's their cell, a deal Fisher book?
That's, that's, that's another good question.
Yeah, you're in the.
Well, yeah, 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 and what, and the first. Are probably resale questions. Well, when, when, when we initially engaged with the ultimate, we can talk about, you know, we, we have fifty books up in the office, they're just sitting there. You know, do we, do we sell those? And and we sell those. They're right now, if you try, you definitely.
Probably people just don't get it like they used to, because we all get along. So I, I don't know what the value is, but if you wait much longer. I think that would be less valuable as time goes by. Are you saying?
Well.
Are you asking about ethically, should we be selling? Something like that, because who do they really belong to? I don't know.
Well, so, so, so. We're bringing it up for two reasons, that number one is to. To remind everyone that that we do still have.
Okay.
But number two, to kind of Zach's point about the wheel, wheelbarrow.
Yeah.
They, we.
I got you, I got you.
I think. I wouldn't want to. Assume what somebody was thinking when they voted yes or no for this, and so I think the best I would go off of is. Even if the petition language wasn't specific. But language on the ballot was specific. And I would want to be very careful. To not insult our citizens by suggesting that they didn't read what they voted for. I don't know what was on the mind of everybody as they voted for it. It says equipment there. So I think as we're thinking about different options, including one that might involve. Some sort of educational component about, you know, here is the the history of what this, you know, personal practice could be sold. Here's what we were able to do before we started this trading, even before we started the gun wheels thing in twenty eighteen, and what we did in the meantime, what's happening since. We'd like to go back to this twenty eighteen, the whatever period, and there's more. For the city. I just think that as part of, you know, if that is the route we want to go, I just want to be careful that. We don't offend voters, whatever the number was. Thirteen hundred and fifty three people who voted for it.
I think all thirteen, one or three of those people knew that harder and tougher to sell.
You're trying to make a joke, but it's not coming.
I know, I know, I know. It's the problem.
Yeah.
No, I, I see your point, Jamie, on that, I think. Even though the language was there, the examples that were given. About it was on property that made. The issue very different and more towards grab the attention of people more towards the property versus the. You know, the the situation we have right now of the wheelchair. I I don't think we. On on the same. Principle of. Trusting the judgment of our citizens, I don't think we need to put. A vehicle or equipment on the next ballot for them to see the the consequences of this. Like, an educational campaign of, hey, passing the this caused this. I think they can understand it that now if we don't change something about it. At every election, they have to vote on a piece of equipment, it's, it's not. They are intelligent people and the same. After you're talking about it, so. I think we can do an educational campaign, separate the fact of the property versus the equipment and. After doing that educational campaign, then have an amendment that. Will change it so we don't have to to do this, if we are putting, if we want to do a couple of examples of putting things on ballots. It will take a couple of years before anything gets changed.
I think we should write about it. Write about it in the next newsletter.
Yeah.
Are you aware, here's what, here's what we approve, here's what this means, here's some of the things that we're talking about.
Sometimes, maybe, I think that's a good idea, but I think we also need to recognize the fact that we we put that out there. That was tied to use of property as much as getting rid of it. So that adds another component that doesn't fit with selling a truck. So I think we have to be dedicated to educating without offending, and then go ahead.
And so that does sound like there's some. Interest in trying to do something to clarify at some level.
Now, was there some timeframe that we couldn't change?
A year.
It's just one year.
Yeah, but I believe that's happened with elections. Come around.
So then I think, I mean, I made this too, definitely before I had, but so I have a copy of what the term said, so. You can mean that sell public property, so it's possible that we're making it simple in that either animal or real or. At least animal or real, public real property. Say it there, and then again, rent the location of the real property. And we can see either the word real and no free shop, that again, we got. At least I personalize that it would be complicated in terms of what actually changes relating to the charter.
Can you share that?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
One more.
Yeah.
I'll throw up there is because we've, this has been introduced as a, do we want to vote a term amendment? We ought to be careful to check with council to make sure that whatever we publish doesn't. Violate campaign advocacy laws. Yeah. That's it.
Because of the council wants to be neutral, right?
Because we can't spend public funds advocating for.
And 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 there's a certain number of rules related to it that. You, you can put out factual information. Identifying, you know, what happens if it passes, what happens if it does not pass. But it can't be phrased in such a way as, oh, yes, for, that's more. Of other, you know, that's advocacy.
Do we have a, do we have a long list of things that we would put on about?
And 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 so as far as I can see, so. I. We, we, we definitely.
Why don't you share that, why don't you put that together, just around ideas, what we should talk about. The number of, the number of items I heard that we're talking about, you can be on something like that. And if somebody may have found, we have a time table, you know, some of these things come off the bill. You can't quite, you still pay this thing for the last five or year, it died three days ago, it's sort of cost you thirty, forty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars. If I didn't get the part. I waited for three months for a part. When I do it. I think my mom or daddy gave me a smaller part, did not. Or the thing, I mean, it was ridiculous, you know? And and then I got another one, which since I found out. Big hall, and it's for the other, I talked about, yeah, they have a baseball, they called me, they called me, said that, how we will behave that, we do not stop. You don't know what's. You can't explain things, so not, not the point was actually, but. Okay, I'll count, count, I'll talk to it as often.
Okay, no comments tonight for me, thank you.
Okay, Paul, thank you for the mention.
I just want to clarify my comment about it taking so long for. The office, people we staff is a reflection of staff hiring the assistant position, but of our general. Length of time to get the front end of that sorted out. And want to apologize for being a Debbie Downer there, that was not my intent, at the end, I want. It's important to explain, I think, where I'm coming from. And it's exhausting, it was exhausting for me to educate myself about fire stations, I took time off from work to go to conference, I paid for conference, I. Two or dozens of fire stations and asked folks. And then it's even more exhausting to come back and feel like you're screaming into the wind, flapping your arms, so I just wanted to. Share how I was coming into it, and that's all, thank you.
Well, I wanted to say that I really appreciate the open mindedness of the conversation we had about the fire station. And I am hoping that we can keep that momentum going for the rest of the conference.
Wow, oh, yeah, just a couple of things, um, just first of all, I think we all got that email from Paul Katz, the middle school student. He had trouble crossing the road by bushes with his classmates. About, interesting. Well, I guess I just got it then, which is weird. So it's here, it says, I'm writing this letter to you because I'm a student at Middle, at Mill Creek Middle School, I have a learning difference. I was walking with my class to practice shopping and budgeting at bushes, the light at Dexter and Harbor Road was too short for my class and I to get across. I was wondering if there's a way to make the light longer. I also want to let you know that my friend has a hard time treating in town because she can't get into all the buildings in her wheelchair, thanks for taking the time to look at this. So it's funny then, that I, I actually think I was there when that happened, so I don't know. Somebody saw me or knows my car or what, but it's true, they did not have enough time to get across the road. And they weren't even, you know, walking particularly slowly, and I know there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic there, but it may be something. For us to look at, because I think that it's definitely a problem. And then. And then the second thing is, um, you guys are out and about on Halloween, um. I do it up big and there'll be lots of decorations and people hanging out at my house.
Fog machine this year.
What?
We have a fog machine again this year.
Yep, fog machine will be out, there's two protectors, one of them now makes noise, um, so there's lots of lights and lots of fun, so. Anyone wants to stop by, we'll be there.
Right, poison on candy or not?
Uh, yeah, yep, and I have stickers and little toys for people who don't want candy or can't feed candy for the reading.
I just kind of related comment, I got an email from the resident. About the speed of that. Asking why it was fifty there instead of thirty-five.
Yeah, and it's it's fairly straightforward, the the road was formerly Washington County Road Commission. And most of their roads are fifty, but now, I mean, just in the last couple of years, we've taken ownership of that, it's working between. Ryan and. Yeah, characters. But we we haven't looked at. Editing that, that was like.
Speed numbers, what I go to, my process, you know, that's generally set based upon what we call, we can set that. Put counters out and the speed of the parter then of course. And whatever speed it is, then eighty-five out of a hundred. Are driving that in under, but they set the limit at. For people feel comfortable, so that was probably done as a, I guess, was that done as a corridor, follow a couple of light all of them see. Not just where we look at in the city limits at one time, you know, if we get across. Ryan to the west, it does transition down to thirty-five, and I always been in the village, the city, so. That's the, that's the national definite play that's here on your side. And I don't, but I was gonna ask us and find out if him last time they actually did that record study, but that's.
That would be for the built now, even when the chapter said.
Yeah. Okay, Dr. Allen, on arranged, is there anybody that would like to speak on the on arranged, Mr. Vogel in the meeting?
I'll 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 also be doing a Halloween, you can do a Halloween update. Every year, I taste it from the chainsaw.
Oh, yeah.
You're you're right.
But 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 I'll be doing it in Troy, so.
I'm trying to keep it less scary so that the kids that come want to come back.
Um, I nobody I think that has, is there?
No, it's not.
Okay, now I'll see the motion for agenda at nine twenty in three.
So move.
Most of our vision. Set the vice in our hall of favor.
Aye, aye.
As opposed. Everybody have a little good night, have a Halloween.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good Halloween.
Happy Halloween.